Roll call is meeting to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, June 7th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Ms. President, I would that we would remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, both in our local community as well as the global community. Remember all of those who have lost loved ones in our community since the last time we were in these chambers, whether it be to natural causes or regrettably to some violent act. Remember those families in our thoughts and prayers, which includes my family. Also, I want to remember the Beeson and Meredith family, former assistant solicitor here in the city Larry Meredith, and former council member. His wife, Ms. Eva, passed away since we were in these chambers. So we should remember that family as well. Also, finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom as well as the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of May 17th, 2017, and bills for payment on June 2nd and 9th, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Okay, we have a presentation, right Rose?
Yep.
Mr. Brennan would like to join me up there, please? With Brianna Adams, please. We're here today to honor the Robbins Blast Neighborhood Watch and some of the people that helped them in their recent project. And I brought Brianna here to talk about it a little bit.
All right. Thanks, everybody. When I tell people about Pebble Lake Park, I often have to explain where it is, so I'm going to start there. But it's located off of West 26th Street, Cold Spring Drive, and Pebble Drive, behind the Summer House Cafe. So everyone knows now, right? This park has been a large part of the focus of Robbins Blast Neighborhood Watch for a few years now, and we're excited to be here and honor those who have helped us to construct a picnic pavilion for our community. Our watch group was formed in 2010, taking the historical name for this portion of the city. We cover over 400 homes and businesses in the blocks between West 26th and West 32nd Street, from Elmwood Avenue to Washington Avenue. In 2012, as our membership ramped up, we decided to adopt this park, Pebble Lake Park, and take care of the maintenance, planting, and mulching of the gardens. The journey started there, and we met with local architect David Brennan, who so graciously helped us to develop a master plan, including a picnic pavilion, lighted walkways, and preservation of green space as well. Today, we are glad to say that we're continuing forward with this plan. The frame for the pavilion and the roof were put on in just two days by volunteer laborers that we're here to honor today. They're from the Great Lakes Building Trade Council, under the leadership of Chris Parker and Chip Faletti. These workers included carpenters, pipe fitters, and insulators. And while we didn't use the skills of pipe fitters or insulators, one gentleman made it very clear. He had a strong back, and he was here to help. No amount of words can describe the skill and pride that these gentlemen put into this project, but also their unmatched expertise. By working together, seemingly for the first time for a few of them, they have fully constructed the pavilion in just two days. The sheet metal union Local Number 12, under the leadership of Dave Zikowski, worked to add the metal roof with supplies donated from A.W. Farrell, Randy and Cody Pace, as well as Armor Fab and Bob Pace. A concrete pad was just poured this week and was cut by eight Anthony &amp; Sons. Several nearby restaurants helped us to keep them fed, which was a plus and easy in our neighborhood. And we would be remiss without mentioning the cooperation from multiple city departments and people who have helped us through so much of this process, including Doug Mitchell, Sarah Galloway, and Bruce Doherty, who have all played large roles through the planning and installation process, including coordinating a volunteer day with Ask One Tree Service last year, as well as moving the playground so that we could, or moving the swing set, so that we could position the pavilion properly for a hopeful installation of solar panels in the future. The project was funded by multiple fundraisers, the Neighborhood Resource Organization grants, as well as a Gaming Revenue Authority grant. We are lucky to have gems like this throughout our neighborhood and city who are willing to support, volunteer, contribute, and promote the efforts of neighborhood groups like ours. In the near future, we will continue to make small improvements to Pebble Lake Park, knowing that they can have a large impact on our community. We have hopes to include green technology when making further improvements to the park. The construction on this phase of the master plan should be entirely complete by early summer, and we hope to have a party at that time. So you will all be invited. But we are really thankful for these gentlemen in the audience today. Do you want me to? All right. Can we have Bob Pace, please? Is he here?
He is not.
Cody Pace on his behalf?
That's Bob, or?
That's Cody. Chip Faletti from the Great Lakes Building Trade Council Carpenter Union? The Great Lakes Building Trade Council overall, one for their hall, if someone knows. All right, Cody Pace.
There you go.
Randy Pace.
That makes it easy.
All right, and Robbins Blast Neighborhood Watch, thank you very much. So thank you all. I did provide our newsletter for all of the council members today, and there are a few in the back with the sign-in sheet if anyone else is interested.
And I'd just like to say that this is a good example of what happens when neighborhoods and the city of Erie get together and work as a team. And there's a lot of success stories like this around that haven't really, you know, come to the forefront. But we have the Frontier Park, we have the park out on the east side of town, where they're all working in conjunction. We want to see more of these efforts. It helps us, and it helps the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Citizens to be heard. Are there no repository sales? We've got a couple of repository sales.
Right. Are there any repository sales today? Any citizens here to speak? Please step up to the mic, give your name and address?
Hello, Councilman Ernesto Vasquez. I'm here to try to purchase a 853 East 21st Street.
Okay. Would you like to tell us the property you're interested in and what you're planning to do with it?
I would like to use it as a green space. I own the next to property next to it.
Yes, what's the address on that property?
853.
853.
East 21st.
Are there any questions from council?
It's just, excuse me, Ms. President. So it's just, there's nothing on it? It's just an open space, just a lot? Yeah, okay. And you just want to use it for your own green space and expand your yard, your property?
Right. I own the next to property next to it.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we won't vote on this today, but we'll vote on it at a future meeting. And we'll make sure you give your information to the sec—
You've already done that.
Okay. And we'll get back to you with the results.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Elijah Luther. I live in the 1800 block of West A Street, and I wanted to purchase the property. It's like a vacant lot at McClelland and Buffalo Road, and use it as a garden.
Any questions from council?
What's the address?
A garden.
On the Erie County Tax Bureau website, there was no, I guess the word would be like an official address, like a physical. It just said vacant lot at Buffalo Road and McClelland. I can give you the parcel number though.
Parcel number, okay.
It is 15 hyphen 021 hyphen 033 point 0 hyphen 133 point 00.
Council, if I may, on the memo we got from ECND, it says empty lot McClelland Avenue and Buffalo Road, 1824 Wagner Avenue.
1824 Wagner. Okay.
On the Erie County website, I could see on what I think was referred to as the historical card. Maybe at one point, it was referred to as 1824 Wagner. But when I looked at the tax map, the property itself doesn't touch Wagner at all.
That's what I'm trying to picture, that McClelland and Buffalo Road. I know where Wagner is. Because Wagner is past McClelland.
Let's see if there is a diagram in here.
Mm-hmm. And you want to, do you want to do a garden?
Uh, yes, sir.
Private garden on that?
Yes.
I guess the question would be, because we are in the process of looking at some zoning for urban gardening, if you don't, do you own a property or anything adjacent to that? It would just be a standalone garden?
Yeah, it would just be standalone. I don't own anything next to it.
How big is the lot, do you know?
According to the Erie County Tax Website, it is 2.3 acres.
2.3 acres?
Yes, sir.
Do you know what it's zoned down there right now presently?
Residential vacant, I think is what the website said.
R1 or R2, you're not sure?
I couldn't tell you.
If it's R2, it'll fall under the new ordinance then.
Right. Yeah, just depending on what the zoning would be, would affect how this new ordinance or proposed new ordinance will affect it. I guess the other question would be, if it's not in the proper zoning area, then for this young man to purchase it, which we have great appreciation for your ambition and your desire to own property, it's a beautiful thing. But if your intention is a garden and it's not zoned appropriately for that, then there's a bit of an issue with your plan.
Totally understand.
And so maybe we should have some more conversation. Have you given your information to the clerks? Their contact information and everything?
Uh, yes.
Okay, maybe a couple of us will reach out to you, myself and maybe Mr., I say Mr. Brennan, I'll go do a tag team on the way out project and sit down and talk to you.
That'd be great.
And kind of figure out what the zoning is, answer those questions, and see if that works, and see if it fits what your, what your plan and desire is, okay?
Perfect.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any other citizens here for repository sales? Are there any other citizens here for repository sales? One more time, is there any citizens here for repository sales? Hearing none, we move on to citizens to be heard. We have one speaker, correct, that's signed in?
Mary Lee.
Is Mary Lee here?
Good morning, City Councilmen.
Good morning.
The reason why I'm here is because I'm against all the schools, especially collegiate central and roads, about combining. Because there won't be enough teachers to teach all the children in our school. I feel like the safety I'm quite concerned about. How can we make the students feel safe when they walk into their new schools, especially the violence that happens a lot? Why can't we get more school safety in place instead of using the funding that we don't have to get more safety for all schools? More students to be successful after they graduate high school in all the areas they should be focusing on. More safety watch programs is a need, important in all neighborhoods. But I, is a need and important in my neighborhood. But I feel like we don't have that. School violence safety watch programs, lack of EMT buses, take high school students to school and back, especially more crossing guards. Lack of after-school programs for high school students, like band and sports programs. Why take that away from students? Because it's not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Morning, Council. My name is McDonald. My property is 19th and Reed. First thing I want to tell you is, I don't put too much confidence in nothing that all citizens are not involved in. When it comes to the taxpayers' money, all citizens should be involved in anything up here. I wants to know, I want to, I want to know. Now, I also want to know this. The last time I was up here, we was talking about the jobs Ms. Jenkins bought to Erie, with that Walmart guy down Elm Street. She brought hundreds of jobs here. Now, I'm hearing Mr. Shimmers talk about the jobs he brought here. I don't know nobody that got a job from anything that he brought here. Now, could you tell me about these jobs he brought here? Could you tell me anything about them? Because I'd like to know. A lot of people's claim things that are not true. I'm not saying he's lying, but I'm saying this. Where are the jobs that he brought here? Now, I'm looking at him on TV talking about the jobs he brought here. I don't mean to get political. I'm not getting political. I just wants to know. I want to know about these jobs. Now, who, who could I, who up there could tell me anything about these jobs? Don't nobody up there know nothing about them? It don't make sense to claim things that you didn't do. Now, I'm asking you, any of you up there, could you tell me anything about these jobs that Mr. Shimmer brought here?
Mr.—
Wait a minute.
Mr. McDonald, please. We don't engage in that kind of debate.
Look, I want to know about these jobs.
If you want to ask a question, ask it after the meeting. I'll be glad to talk to you.
No, 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 no. He's getting on TV telling about these jobs. Now, Ruby brought jobs here, and ain't nobody saying nothing about them.
Mr. McDonald, you should ask the gentleman in question. This is not a political format.
I just, I'm not—
The election is over. Either stay on task, or I'm going to ask you to sit down, please.
I'm on the agenda.
You got to address an agenda item or something. We're not getting into debates about people's personalities or politics or promises.
I'm not saying nothing about nobody's personality.
Well, you mentioned his name.
Huh?
Please, your time is running, so stay on task.
I know that, and if you wouldn't, if you let me, I could say what I got to say.
I'm waiting.
I don't know why y'all so quick to run to somebody's aid, just because we, I asked the question down here.
Under my—
All I asked you—
Under my leadership, there will be no, there will be no personal attacks on anybody.
That ain't no attack.
Well, then, stay on task.
That ain't no attack. I don't know what, what you call attack. That's no attack.
Please stay on task.
All I asked you about the job. That ain't no, that's not political. She whiz. Can't we come down here and say nothing? We can't say nothing?
Direct your comments to the gentleman in question.
She whiz, yes. I don't understand y'all. I don't understand y'all. Y'all want to cut us off. We can't ask nothing. We can't say nothing now.
Nobody here can speak for a third party. Mr. McDonald, nobody here can speak for a third party, so please stay on task.
I, I, I don't know. I don't know. I hope the next city councilman we get up there, I hope they have more foresight than y'all do, because it don't make sense. It doesn't make sense. Y'all took our time. I can't even mention that.
Oh, you can mention it.
No, I can't mention that. Hell, y'all, we raising hell about that. People can't even get up here. We don't, you're taking our free speech away from us. We won't be able to say nothing up here after a while, unless it's patting one of y'all on the back. And don't, none of you up there deserve it. You don't deserve to be up there. I can't ask about them jobs. I'm, I'm too political. It don't make sense. And you know what? If God came yesterday, he would be too late for me, because he's going to deal with you. You're lying. You got up there talking about you're going to take the city forward. The city's going backward behind a bunch of lies.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
And you are a bunch of liars.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street. There's a list, but no one in front of me got up, so I didn't want the citizens to be heard to slip away.
For the public's information, if you sign in ahead of time with our board secretary, you will get five minutes. We get it anyway, but you'll be put to the front of the agenda.
Mm-hmm. I'm here today to make a simple substantive request. I'm asking council to revoke the approval of the viaduct demolition project on the grounds that they have violated what you approved. Between the fact that the budget is twice what it was approved to be without public explanation, the fact that according to the Boogie Plan, we're supposed to be investing in existing assets, and you want to throw away a $20 million-plus dollar asset, the fact that there are over 200 trips a day being made on that viaduct, and part of the approval was based on promises that there would be pedestrian safety enhancements to compensate for the lack of the viaduct. Now, the enhancements that are happening south of the project have nothing to do with compensating for the viaduct. That doesn't count. What counts is what is specifically being done to get families and schoolchildren away from the 12th and Bayfront intersection. The approval was based on that they would not have to cross there. They would be brought down to 12th and East Avenue, crossed at the safer intersection. Since then, and it's never been said publicly, it's only been said in meetings at the site, they have abandoned that because it's impractical. And when asked to, "Well, then what are you doing in its stead?" There is no answer. We walked that area with them, and they could not solve it. They still have nothing publicly shown to solve that issue. That is substantive, especially given what's been happening lately on dangerous accidents at the Bayfront. That alone warrants at least a public hearing, if not an outright rejection of the approval or revocation. The engineering team, part of the approval, was to immediately publish the timeline on the project. That approval was given in the first quarter of 2015. The first timeline made public was not until the fourth quarter of 2016. They obviously did not make that their first task. There was a ton of work they did, which violates their promise that that would be the first task. There is just a continual repetition of broken promises violating the grounds of that approval. I think you have more than enough grounds to revoke it, have a public hearing, have public presentation of what that project is today and the cost of it, and be transparent to the people, which, again, transparency was part of the approval. So I respectfully ask that you give that strong consideration, and in so doing, you would be honoring your promise to the citizens of Erie, that you are their voice in this process. And please, don't take their word that it's too late. They've been saying that ever since 2014, and you've seen all along the way, there have been plateaus to stop the project. It has never been too late, and it's still not too late. That's been a deceit dumped on you time and again by the administration. I don't disagree with everything the administration does, but on this issue, I strongly disagree, and I ask for your help for the sake of the residents of Erie. Thank you.
I'm just going to start my timer. My name is Fredda Tepfer. I'm a certified orientation mobility specialist. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street. I'm the resource specialist of Erie CPR. First, I want to comment on your agenda item to appoint a member to the Planning Commission. I understand that's under the authority of the mayor. However, there has not been any opportunity for the public to apply for that position. That position, according to the information I obtained under a right-to-no request, states that that is a term that expires in 2018. Therefore, I request that you do not appoint that position through 2021, but that you appoint it only through 2018. Appointing it through 2021 would extend the authority of the mayor beyond his term in office, so I request you do that. I'm here also to address the issue of the, of the viaduct. In, in a reply to the PUC, city engineer John Tushak claimed that the Bayfront Connector was a superior route to the East Street Viaduct. That's based on many fallacies, one of which was he compared the six-foot pedestrian sidewalk on the viaduct to the eight-foot bike way on the Bayfront Connector. Well, nobody uses the sidewalk. They use the entire 22-foot width. So that is a total fallacy. And as Adam told you, the, and I have provided you on numerous occasions, the actual analysis of alternatives of the viaduct was specifically based on the determination that there would be no crossing at East 12th Street by pedestrians, that they would be routed on the south side of the street. In the newsletter of the McBride Viaduct Project, it states that in fact now, they're going to be crossing at 12th and the Bayfront Connector, and then traveling east. So that is a fallacy. Also, it's a fallacy that it's a superior route, because people, this walkway was designed as a recreational route. It was not designed for regular, daily, twice daily, five days a week, walking, walking alongside busy traffic, heavy noise, pollution, particulate pollution, splash, difficult snow removal. All of those are things that were not analyzed in the project. Also, your approval of the project was based on the false assumptions stated over and over by members of the council to the media, that you felt that you would get stuck with the bill for the study if you did not approve the project, and that was never true. And Federal Highways has, and Pendott has stated that to us on numerous occasions. There is excessive cost of this project is now $4.3 million. Again, John Tushak claims that's not demolition costs. Well, if you are required to upgrade a crossing and to put in something where you're going to, at the north and— to, at the north and south end of the viaduct, that is very much part of the demolition cost. Also, as Cynthia Mohammed has stated, removing the viaduct creates a containment area for this community. It's already bad enough what you've done by building the Bayfront Connector, but removing the viaduct removes a key pedestrian link for people who live on that side of the city in the second poorest census tract in the city. There have been no public meetings, there have been no public meetings to date, and I have been told that my concerns expressed at a meeting that we had with engineers in September have been included in the new design. However, I have not seen a record of what we discussed at that meeting. And so I say, please rescind your approval of the demolition of the East Street Viaduct for the sake of the entire community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, or actually, good morning. I'm Lisa Austin, 1262 West Ninth. I'm here as a member of Civitas and also as a member of the group Erie CPR. I wanted to ask you and everyone in the audience, if you remember, if you're old enough, the movie The Graduate. This is the movie where Dustin Hoffman falls in love with a young woman who's going to marry somebody else, and at the last minute, he shows up at the church, breaks in, runs down the aisle, grabs the bride, and runs away. Everybody would have told him, forget about it. That bride's going to marry somebody else. The invitations have been sent. She's got the dress. It's over. But it's not over. And I want to tell you that the demolition of the viaduct is not assured. You still have the power to run down the aisle and save this bridge. It's very important that you do it, at least that you delay it. If you don't want to commit to not demolishing it, at least let the next administration decide. Let me tell you why you should do this, why you should delay. All of the reasons that Adam has presented to you, that Cynthia Mohammed has presented to you, and that Fredda has presented to you, I support, all of those reasons. Number one is on everybody's mind is safety of the children, safety of our children. There's an eight-year-old boy in an intensive care unit down in Pittsburgh who was hit crossing the interchange at Broad Street and the Bayfront Connector. If you tear down that viaduct, you can expect more children in intensive care units as they cross over the East 12th intersection with the Bayfront Connector. It is an unsafe route. Okay, so safety of kids is the primary reason you need to delay this. Number two, cost. As already has been expressed, the original costs of $1.2 million have now ballooned to $4.5 million. This is not reasonable. It's a waste of taxpayers' money. It's going to cost less money to stabilize it. So in other words, if you have a house and the roof is leaking, you don't tear down the house, you fix the roof. It's going to cost $3 million or less to stabilize it. Let's do that. Thirdly, jobs. If you tear down the bridge, the majority of the people employed are going to be from out of the area or out of state. If you fix the bridge, we can make it into a jobs training program. We can, the money can stay in local pockets. Fourth, the L.R. Kimball Study was flawed. You've heard about that. We can go into it in another time if you want to hear more. Five, expert planners from around the country have come here and told you, they've written in the Erie Times News, "Keep the Viaduct." I'm talking about John Norquist, the former mayor of Milwaukee, who led the revitalization of that city, came and wrote in the Erie Times News, "Keep the McBride Viaduct." Why isn't anyone listening? We also brought in Dr. Mindy Thompson-Folow from New York City. She's known as the town shrink. She is the first one who told me that this is a racially charged issue, that it is creating a containment area, that the area immediately adjacent to the bridge has the most diverse and the most percentage of poverty than 98% of the rest of the country. So this is going to hurt the people who can afford to be hurt the least. All right, then you were told a bunch of, let's call them untruths. You were told the cost of the study, which we know has changed. You've told that the kids are going to be safe. They're not. You were told about that you are going to have to cover the cost of the price tag of the study if you didn't accept it. That's not true. And now some other lies, or I'm sorry, not lies, untruths. Let me rephrase that, that the cost of insurance is too much. The city does not insure separately that bridge. It ensures the entire city. So you're not going to save or lose money with the bridge. So leave it, you know, that's not a real issue. The other issue is maintenance costs. The maintenance, once you stabilize this bridge, is minimal. It's clearing the snowplows, and it's clearing the drains so the water doesn't back up. Here is what I want to tell you, is we have been working to do a lot of things over the last couple of years, trying to engage the community that's going to be most impacted by this. And let me just tell you, it's hard to engage people who are living in extreme poverty, who are getting evicted, who are going to funerals, who are, you know, they're living in a very tough situation. They're not, they don't have time to come here and speak in this microphone. At any rate, so we have actually formed a nonprofit finally. It's Erie CPR. It's affiliated with Winds of Change. We're legal now. We've actually even written a grant, which we've submitted. We're willing to write more grants. We're willing to help maintain and enhance the bridge. All we're asking right now is just hold off. Just let the next mayor take a look at this, because if you are serious about embracing the Boogie Plan, and I know all of you have talked, many of you have talked publicly about this, the Boogie Plan has four principles. Every one of those principles is going to be broken if you tear down that bridge, as Adam just said, investing in existing assets. That's a 20. Anyway, thank you for your time. I'm going to pass out the letters which we emailed to you, and also an invitation to come and walk with Gary Horton and a number of other members of the Erie CPR on Monday. May I pass these to you?
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, city councilmen and women. My name is Amy Jozola. I live in the city of Erie, and I'm here to strongly support the urban garden ordinance. My support for this is two-pronged. I am a citizen in the city, and I have been most of my life. I have seen the growing trend of blight, vacant lots, and decay in our neighborhoods. These are eyesore's. They encourage truancy, loitering, and littering, and I know that this is not what I want for my family. I am also the executive director of Environment Erie. We are a nonprofit that has focused on neighborhood revitalization, and we are currently working also on vacant lot improvements. Both personally and professionally, I'm excited for the adoption of this ordinance. I believe this is an ordinance that can offer immediate benefits to the citizens of Erie, mainly also addressing a lot of eyesore's that we do see every day. I know most of us on our ways to work, on our ways to play with our children in our neighborhoods, and on our trips to school when we take them to schools. So I'm pretty, it's pretty simple. I'm just here to say that I really support this ordinance. I'm very happy with the development of it, and we're excited to see the changes and work along with the partners. At Environment Erie, we are already working with some of the partners in the city of Erie, the Better East Side Task Force, our West Bayfront, Gannon University, and the Erie Redevelopment Authority on ideas for vacant lots, so this is very timely and very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also here in support of the urban farming initiative that is happening. My name's Faith Kendig, and my partner and I, John De Silva, are the co-founders of the Oasis Project. The Oasis Project is a nonprofit that will be operating a year-round indoor farmers' market in the Paca Building at 1501 State Street. The mission of the Oasis Project is to create a platform in the Erie community that emphasizes a direct connection between the producer and the consumer, featuring sustainable business practices in a diverse array of farm products, arts, crafts, and prepared foods all produced within the Erie region. We want to serve as a gathering place for regional farmers and entrepreneurs in downtown Erie, as well as provide a platform for new businesses to test their markets and develop a customer base before, oh, I'm sorry, before opening their own brick-and-mortar store within the Erie community. We plan to use the urban agriculture as a tool for educational programs that focus on healthy and sustainable living, farm-to-table cooking, entrepreneurship, and much more. The zoning changes will allow us to expand our programs into residential neighborhoods where the benefits of urban farming can truly be realized. So I just want to thank you for supporting these zoning changes and for considering the feedback from other community leaders that are pushing urban agriculture forward in our community.
You want to give that address again for the farmers' market?
1501 State Street.
Thank you.
It's in the Paca Building. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? For the last time, are there any other citizens to be heard? Okay, Rose, if you want to proceed.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 15990, official ordinance number 142017. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received as a grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Program, which will be utilized to strategically improve neighborhood housing through acquisition and demolition of blighted properties, homeowner rehabilitation projects, and resident-identified neighborhood beautification projects. By Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that Council File Bill Number 15990, now known as Official File Ordinance Number 142017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 142017 finally by a seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 15991. An ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Erie Articles 2, 3, and 6 by adding a provision to allow an urban garden as a permitted use and market garden as a special exception in R2, R3, and RLB districts defining such uses and requirements. By Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Number 15991, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'm absolutely in favor of the change in the zoning. I did have just a couple of concerns that are not, many of which have been answered already. I still have a question about the nature of certain individuals that are for-profit businesses acquiring certain lots, whether it be through the Redevelopment Authority or even whatever the process might be. I know there are a couple of different ideas and processes, maybe leasing through the Redevelopment Authority or some pseudo-governmental organization. And the question for me turns into tax revenue for a for-profit business that is absolutely improving and underutilized space in our community, which I think has value in and of itself. But I also think that we should also continue to look at how do we recoup? Because part of the blighted property review committee, a lot of the work that is done through economic development is about getting these underutilized, blighted properties, whether they be buildings that are dilapidated on property or land, or just land that's not used, is to get it back on the tax rolls in some way, shape, or form, which is the ultimate goal, to have two things. One, have a better use or appropriate use, but also to ultimately get back on the tax rolls. And so if we are looking, especially, this is more for the larger properties or the conglomerate or the bringing together of smaller parcels to make large parcels for for-profit businesses. I just think that we should make sure that we look at the process, that we, I think we can pass this, but still tweak the process afterwards. But I don't think that a for-profit business should be able to get significant land in our community, in our city, for free and make money off of it. So I may be oversimplifying it, but for me, that's a concern in the process. Thank you, Mr. President.
I think we can start the process after this vote.
Oh, sure, yeah. I don't want to stop the vote. I'm voting for it, absolutely, because I think it's the right thing to do. But I just think that as many, I mean, I won't say the devil, but the details are in the details, right? So you've got to figure out, once we start the process and say yes, then as we work through and we go through and fine-tune, that's just something on my list that I'd like to see how we're going to maneuver and get the maximum impact. Because here's the thing, and I don't want to be preachy about it, but a lot of these properties are in areas that are not the most sometimes safe and sometimes best-kept areas of our city. But they're still, it's still property, and there's one thing there's not going to be any more of, and that's land and property. So, you know, Erie Insurance has seen the value in some of the properties that have been eliminated or thrown and cast away on the Lower East Side. I don't think we should lose the value of some of those properties, for example, on the Lower East Side or wherever else. We can get some, recoup some tax revenue, as well as have a better use for them. So again, I don't want to overdo it, but I just, I am going to vote for this. I'm in support. But I think there's some more processes as we move forward that we need to look at to maximize the, this change in the ordinance and allowing the urban garden process to happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good comments, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President, I have sort of a quick question on Mr. Jones.
Yes.
The, I know the Erie Redevelopment Authority, I know they want to sell some of those properties, so they don't want to continue to just allow people to use them, so the object is to sell them, get them into productive use, and put them back on the tax rolls. So that'd be the ultimate goal, and this allows an opportunity to possibly do that. But you're right, those are great concerns, and we need to address those.
Yes, Councilman Jones, we're in a new area. We've never had for-profit farms in the city in a long time to this extent that we're going to do. Or even, you know, we need to look, I mean, look at the process down the line.
Yeah, and then, Mr. President, if I could, just when we had our study session, when we had this conversation, the gentlemen that were here, when I asked the same question, they were, "Oh, I don't really know for sure exactly how we're going to do that," you know? And so the conversation was that it would be funneled through the Redevelopment Authority as of right now. So for me, that means no tax revenue because it's going to be owned technically and on paper by the Redevelopment Authority still. So if we're, if the process is okay, they start, but then ultimately, they can be purchased, and that should be what we're pushing for, not just holding property. Again, so I know we got the land bank stuff that's happening and all those things, so I think this is just the right time to make sure we have some more of the right processes in place and questions asked so that we can, again, maximize these underutilized properties. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other member? Rose, go ahead.
Yes, I'll continue the roll call. Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15991 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15992, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $126,757 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof, 2017 Insurance Fraud Prevention Authority. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Number 15992, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski. City Council read and adopt. Council File Ordinance Number 15992 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Council File 15993, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $2 million from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Office of the Budget as funding from the Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program, RACP, and will be utilized to assist in the planning and construction of a dental school in the city of Erie. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Arrington, the Council File Ordinance Number 15993, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'm absolutely in support, again, of this moving forward and developing this project through LECON. They are a great asset in our community in a lot of different ways, bringing students here and adding to the economy in a significant way, and again, through multiple ways. But I just want to just throw out again... But I just want to just throw out, again, the conversation around participating in a pilot program. I know they have done some things with the school district, as Mr. Mersky had mentioned in our caucus session, but they have a significant amount of property in the city and are looking to expand that and develop that. And I'm not sure, and again, I'm not a part of the administration, although we work well together, the activity or the intensity of asking for a pilot program or a pilot participation with LECOM. I'm sure that's happened, and I'm not sure, well, I know what the response is, because we don't have one. So I think that, you know, these are some of the things that we have to have a question and conversation about, because we're going to talk about giving and being a conduit for money to develop in the city for very significant revenue generators, although they are tax-exempt entities that do great work, but still are soaking up and utilizing space in our, in the city with no tax benefit for the city or the citizens. So, you know, I don't know. We've got a few months left in this administration, a few months left in the few, with a few of us that are still on council. Maybe we can kind of continue to have some of these or some invigorated conversations with, again, the next administration as well. So, but again, this is a significant undertaking for us as a city to approve, and it would be nice to be able to have some kind of other levels of partnership that are reciprocal in the same way. So, again, voting for this, but just wanted to air some of those concerns, and hopefully we can use that conversation to move forward and get more participation in the pilot program.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Continuing roll call. Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City council read and adopt. Council file ordinance number 15993 by a seven, nay zero, on first reading. Just want to make note that items four, five, and six under ordinance for first reading, which are all connected to the HUD resolution, those have been pulled due to still not receiving the figures, economic and community development have not received the figures yet from HUD. So those are pulled for now. That'll take us to new business.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Okay, are there?
Second.
First, do we have any separations?
Number six.
Under?
New business.
New business?
Yep.
Any other separations?
Mr. President, number one.
Number, under new business?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other separations? Any other separations? Voting on the balance, Rose, separating, of course, number one and six?
Mr. President, Mr. President, quick question. Quick question about number 10, under, uh, purchase orders, with BIU.
Ooh, okay.
Um, just, I don't know if we got something. We may have gotten it, and I didn't see it. So if we did, I apologize to the clerk's office and whoever. I know we were putting a hold on a lot of things with BIU, and so is this something that's just, that is necessary for us to move forward with what we'd agreed upon? This isn't expanding anything new in our relationship with BIU?
This is just the mechanical inspections that they've always done.
Always done, okay.
With the rental program and anything like that.
Okay, all right.
You recommend paying this, then? Okay.
All right, thank you. So we don't have to separate that?
Okay.
We don't, what's that?
Oh.
We don't have to separate that. I got an answer from the controller. Thank you.
A note also, Rose, that number nine under new business.
Do you want to separate that out here?
Thank you.
We also pulled number nine under new business.
Number nine, yeah.
At the request of Mr. Dieter.
I'll let you know after, before I move the balance of the agenda. Yeah, before voting on the balance of the agenda, just make note that number two, the resolution from HUD, and also number nine, the resolution from the Redevelopment Authority for tax exoneration, have both been pulled from the agenda. So we'll go ahead and move the balance of the agenda. Moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarsky, Resolution number one, sponsored by Mr. Brennan, seconded by council members Arrington, Jones, Kwiatowski, Mersky, Winarsky, and Witherspoon, is a resolution to support the Empower Erie Community College effort. Discussion?
Is there a second on it? You said for a second, Rose.
Discussion, it said second.
Yeah, that was separated out.
Oh, okay. Any discussion on it, then?
Who seconded it?
All the members of city council.
I didn't agree to that, but.
Okay, you can.
That's what I was kind of.
Make comment.
Sonia initialed at the top.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, by Brennan, Mr. Brennan and Mrs. Arrington. Was there any discussion on that?
Mr. President, just a few things. I, I will vote yes on this, mostly because it's a done deal already at the county, according to the Erie Times News. But I did want to put on the record some of my comments. I'm highly skeptical of county council's claim that they're going to not raise taxes for five years in support of the community college. I don't know how you can project that far into the future, your tax needs, and when we look at the details, I went to the session that they had at the Blasco Library. The last time that they came to present, I asked for a packet of information. I have not received that. I'm very, I agree with the concept of higher education, and that's why I will vote for this, because I do believe in opportunities for our young people. The delivery and the mechanism of which we're doing this, you know, the county's going to do it, because the county's ultimately the sponsor, we're just saying we agree with it. You're basically banking on casino money, which hasn't been appropriated yet, to pay for it, and that's a very big concern for me, because that money is not promised and it is not guaranteed. I have an accountability to the taxpayers, and I do want to put that on the record. So moving forward, the county is going to have, to maneuver those types of financial obligations that they're putting on the backs of the taxpayers. And, you know, as a, as an elected official by the taxpayers, you know, we have to be accountable for that. And so I support the effort because I support higher education. I have deep concerns about how they're going to pay for it, and I have very deep concerns about their promise of five years of no new taxes. Thank you.
Are there any other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Winarsky.
Unfortunately, I cannot support this at this time. We did have a study session, our council, some very good positives did come out of it, but the question, just like Mr. Mersky has mentioned, is of financial concerns, and a lot of questions still remain. Five years, they should be sustainable, they say, but we don't know what 10 years is going to bring or 20 years. There's other community colleges in the state, and I think one of the questions we had at our study session is, how did they develop after 10 years, 20 years, 25 years? We were supposed to get a feasibility study in our mailboxes. We never got any of that. So it sort of makes it tough to vote on something that we still don't have all the financial information about. What we do here as a council is moot today, because county council is poised to pass this and be a partner in this community college. But with the county being the partner, so are we, the city taxpayers also, and that's just the way it is. But just because we don't have enough financials at this point, and there's, that's the reason alone, I cannot support it this time. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few comments about that. As the, as the sponsor of this, and of course, I'm going to be voting, voting for this. But there, you know, we've heard all the many positives, of course, I can name them all, but they've been, we've discussed them at the, at the study, study session, and we discussed them internally. But I think, I think one of the most important things is that this is something our, our county and our city needs, especially students living in our urban core. It's something, you know, the skilled workforce area is so important, and we need to be, make sure that we're attractive to other businesses that are, we want to stay here, we want businesses to move here. So this is something that I think is really important. You know, there is some uncertainty with this, as mentioned, other council members with the, with the financing, but nothing, nothing's set in stone, the wheels are still in motion. I think there's, there's just so many positives that we have to move forward with this and continue down that road. And, you know, again, it's, it's something that's going to be good for, good for our community, and I support it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Similarly, I'm very supportive of the concept, I recognize the need. We did not receive the information that we requested from, from the group, was it Empower Erie, that we requested, again, from during our study session. I've been in several meetings, whether some larger, some smaller, hearing the plans and the project strategies, certain projections out five years. I would agree with Mr. Mersky, it's really, really impressive, actually, that county can say we're not going to raise taxes for the next five years. That's pretty impressive with all the variables involved in, in what it takes to facilitate the county as a municipality, especially with some of the revenue sources, as was mentioned earlier, are still X-factors and have some legislative connectivity to them. I'm not sure how you can do that. One of the other, some of, I guess a few of the other concerns that I have are, I understand this, the county, from my understanding of this process and the community school at this level, the county has to be a particular, has to be a partner in the funding of the community college, or it has to be, has to be a municipal body that kind of takes the financial responsibility necessary to move this forward, is one-third of a part of the financial makeup. I'm not sure how much does that give the county council in particular? Management of the school? That was a question that came to me later, facilitating the management of the, of the school and how it goes and where it goes. Because, again, the message that we've received is that they're looking to house their main campus in the city proper, which I think makes sense for all the reasons that they've articulated in the inner-city, young people as well as inner-city or citywide residents because of jobs leaving, having to be retrained and retooled, all those things makes perfect sense. But with the county council being the managing municipality or managing legislative body, are there always going to be, are there going to be the votes to keep that facility or the headquarters or the base campus in the city? I think a lot of our support, our being those on this council who are supportive and are willing to vote for this, a lot of it was contingent on the, I won't say the promise, because you can't, what can you promise? But the pseudo-promise or the strong desire to have the building or the campus in the city proper. For me, it's a big deal for me voting yes to this. But that could change if the county council is in the majority of outside the city legislators on county council. So those are some of the concerns that I have. Again, I'm going to vote for it, because I believe in, in higher education, I believe in the, the presented vision, but still have some questions, and I think those questions, I wanted to have them articulated on the record for further conversation and hopefully further evaluation as we move forward. Again, it's a lot of X-factors, and you can't know. Again, I get it, you can't know. Then they're transitioning from this Empower Erie group to at some point, there's going to be an actual committee and a board and, and that whole process, I'm really interested in what that looks like. Is it going to be just changing of the same people, changing the name or the role that they play? So those are some of my concerns. Again, I support the concept, know it's needed. I've agreed with that since the first round of, of the question about the community college. But now that we're getting seemingly closer to it becoming a fruition or a reality, some of the details, I'm really interested in finding out, how do we solidify some of these things in the very near future? So, again, supportive with, with questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Arrington.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm 100% supportive of the community college. No matter what we do, there's always pros and cons. We have to take a chance, you know? We have a lot of different issues going on in our community, but I think this community college is what's going to bring hope back to the city of Erie, especially in it, in the inner-city. You know, these youth are our future, and I truly believe that this community college can get these kids where they need to be, so they can have a good career and have money to support their families. So we can talk about the pros and cons all day. This is something that we need to take a chance on, and I really think we should have took a chance years ago when it first came up. If we had a, we probably wouldn't be where we are today, but I definitely support it
Mr. President, too, one, one thing.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Not to again to belabor it, but as, as we're having these conversations, because at some point, it becomes an issue of a business decision for those who are going to be facilitating the school and running it, and that when it's a business decision or a business model, their criteria that come into play for those who are able to participate in the organization or in the business or whatever. So to Mrs. Arrington's point, I 100% agree and echo it. My question would be, as this process moves on, what's the criteria for student enrollment? Because if we're talking about having a significant impact on some, on some of the issues in our community, those who are and have maybe a varied past, they have some, gotten themselves in some trouble, is that going to prohibit them from being enrolled in the school? Like, those are questions that if we're going to have those legitimate conversations about improving the, the employability of certain citizens, a lot of times, that question is not brought up directly. And so those are questions, again, those are things that we have to look at and ask, how do you get through those processes? Are there going to be special systems put in place and inform? I mean, again, and I know this is a ways out, but those are legitimate questions. I think that if we're going to make these kinds of supporting letters and endorse things, we should have as much information or at least put as much, as much conversation out as possible about it. Some might rebut and say, "Well, we're not asking you for money, but you're asking for our support," which sometimes can be better than money, because our letter of support can help generate money for this project. And so I think, again, these are a lot of questions that we should have and want to have answered. And, and I don't know how much polling was done on the young men and women in our community who we are saying this is going to benefit, but, and I don't know. I mean, ideally, it makes sense, but the student still has to go to class, still the student has to be willing to do it. And sometimes we can put things in place that, for people who aren't really in, ready to do what we put in place for them. So, again, I don't want to belabor, I just, maybe I'm just being talkative today, but these are things that are just really on my mind, and I think we want to make sure that we have in a, in a significant part of the conversation. So, thank you again, Mr. President.
I add my two cents. Generally, I'm in support of a community college. I like the concept. I just think, judging by how they did in other communities, they worked with prevailing businesses, with the system in place there to work with the community, provide the type of training that was necessary to either bring in the jobs or to work with those that are here. The questions I have were brought up by many of you. There's the gaming money question, which is very unresolved. And pardon me if I don't jump onto bandwagon with the county, but we've never had a good relationship with them as far as dialogue. far as dialogue. And that bothers me a little bit, that we're supposed to jump at this leap of faith when we have a Commonwealth who, as Mr. Mursky can attest to, cannot even fund public education. And we got that big elephant in the room. And now we hear that some of the public colleges such as Edinburgh and Indiana, Slippery Rock and various other schools are in danger of either being downsized or in some cases closed, once again, through a lack of state funding. And here we are adding another layer to the educational process, which I agree with. But they're not even adequately funding those things that exist already. We may not have high schools to provide the kids that go to this community college. If we don't get that, that situation straightened up. I'm not prepared to, I'm not prepared to give a, my vote in support of that this time because of that. I, you know, if some changes in the future, I'll be glad to send a personal letter or bring it up again for another letter of support. But at this time, there's just too many unanswered questions about the scope of the school and how it's going to be financed. And remember this, if for some reason, the county has to pick up a larger share of the funding, 40% of that roughly, whatever figure you want to use, is going to come out of city coffers, I mean, our taxpayers. And, you know, walking around the community, you get many viewpoints. And those taxpayers that are left, as Mr. Jones always points out, the ones that, the few that are left in the city are worried. They're worried about, you know, what's the next bill on the public education going to be and what's the next one, who's going to fund the colleges such as Edinburgh, let alone a community college level. And Mr. Barnes brought up an interesting question about a rural community college, which I haven't had time to look into, but I'd be interested in what that is. So with that said, let's move on to vote, Rose.
All right. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski.
No.
This resolution will adopt five to two. By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Winarsky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, that the mayor and other appropriate city officials are hereby authorized to execute an agreement between the City of Erie and Lake Erie College of Osteopathic Medicine to assist in the planning and construction of a dental school in the City of Erie, not to exceed $2 million of redevelopment assistant capital program grant funds from the Commonwealth Pennsylvania Office of Budget. Discussion?
I'll be very brief, but really just to separate this out for further confirmation of what I said earlier about the city being a conduit and supporting great endeavors, for example, with this dental school with LeCom. But we should also have some reciprocal conversation around a pilot participation at some level, if not 50%, a quarter, 25%, something, some consistent budgetable payment in lieu of taxes or partnership with, with that school as they're moving farther and farther into the city, broader and broader into the city, utilizing and making property and making it not taxable anymore. So that's all.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mursky. I think that this is a, a good thing for our community. It's an application for a RCAP grant, which, which they now call RACP, but what it will allow us to do is, we talk about education and we're talking about a community college, well, this is higher education even at a greater level. $2 million of state money, which will go to some community in this Commonwealth, is going to funnel here if we get this grant, creating construction jobs for the building of the facility, creating teaching jobs for the faculty of this dental school, and bringing young people into this community for their years of dental school and possibly allowing them to stay. I think it's a good opportunity for this community. As we see this city transition from a manufacturing economy to a mixed economy, we see the rise of education, we see the rise of medicine in this community, much like Pittsburgh 15, 20 years ago. And so we have to, like to Mr. Jones' point, balance that with the tax exemption. That being said, the property that they're building on is already tax exempt. We're not getting any money for it already. So to me, the grant is a good move for this community because $2 million of state money being invested in our community is a good thing. That's your taxpayer money from the state coming back into this city community.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Rose.
All right. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. And this resolution will adopt seven, zero. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Witherspoon today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brief report on the Erie Housing Authority. Mr. Dan Rosner retired from the Housing Authority as the executive director. Mr. Mike Fraley is currently acting executive director and they're in the process of moving forward to finalize that position. I'll report again as I receive information. Also, I'd like to relinquish the balance of my time to Councilwoman on the right when it's her turn.
That's generous of you. Mr. Brennan?
Yes, thank you. About the Robbins blast presentation earlier, I just wanted to say thank you to all people involved. I know Brianna and Ed were here and a lot of the other people who donated labor materials. It was a great effort and there is a lot of work put into that. I mean, not, not by me, I mean, I played a very, very, very small part and helped them out a little bit. But it was their ideas and their, their labor and their coordination efforts to make that happen. So it's a great thing for that neighborhood and hopefully that involvement continues because there's a lot of other people, a lot of other neighborhoods that are doing the same thing and making their neighborhoods improved. As for that, no other report, a couple updates for our next meeting, but I'll hold on to those for our next meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Mursky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I'd like to congratulate Chris Mong and Allison Schmidt from our Economic Development Office on applying for the Department of Community and Economic Development Keystone Communities Grant, which allowed us to get $500,000, half a million dollars towards our Erie Refocus Plan. That's, that's very good because the more that comes in from outside, the less that we have to generate from inside the community. And that's one of the big things with Erie Refocused is the price tag. And so whenever we're able to apply for these competitive grants and receive them, that's, that's a good thing and they do a fine job up there and I wanted to thank them for that. Also, I wanted to express my deep concerns with HUD and the federal government and the administration. You know, at this point, it's already June. Summer rec programs are about to start. Thankfully, we had some money in reserves to get those started. But if the federal government cuts this HUD program, our Community Development and Economic, CDBG grant, the city's out $2.5 million. And I want people to understand that while we cut things at the federal level, the trickle-down affects people. And it affects people right here in our city and our community. That money funds summer rec, that money funds the spoons league, it funds a lot of things that go on in the community predominantly for people of moderate and low income. That's what it's designed for. And so I urge our federal officials, and I'll be on the phone with Representative Kelly, Representative Thompson and our senators, to express my deep concern. It's never been this late that we have got our HUD allocation. It's never been this late. And this is deeply concerning because without that money, we have a $2.5 million hole in our budget. So I encourage everybody to call their representatives at the federal level and let them know that we need that HUD money. Thank you.
Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very brief as usual, but just want to say congratulations to our Erie Otters Organization, not only for winning the OHL championship, but representing this city, our city with class and dignity. I was fortunate to be at the rally that Mayor Senet and Assistant Beck was at, that when the mayor presented the key to the city to the organization in behalf of a great season. And we look forward to many, many more. It's been a great honor that they've been a part of this town. We look for many more years to come. Now Bob mentioned our summer rec program and CDGB, but it's that time of year again. And every year, I think I go through the same spiel with this. Parents, grandparents, there's a lot of things the kids can do this summer. And without a lot of the great sponsors that we have to help make it possible, as well as the City of Erie ourselves. But take advantage of it. I don't know if anybody did not get any program for the summer rec, but I believe they can get it online. They did get it in schools, can get it down here at City Hall. But please, I mean, not only does this summer rec program create jobs for some of the older youth, it also keeps our younger youth busy during the day doing different activities or sports, as well as there's a meal or two involved. So it's something we've had to offer for a very, very long time. It's something to take advantage of. And once again, I just push the parents. If the parents can't do it, if the grandparents can get involved, to utilize this program and have a great summer with it. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
I'm going to be brief because I've been long-winded all day. Somebody looked at me, you're talking too much. But I am passionate about the things that I talk about. So it's semi-apologetic. I look forward to working with the young man. I apologize, I misplaced his name, didn't remember his name. That's looking to purchase the property for a pository sale on McClellan or on Buffalo Road.
Elijah Luther.
Elijah, thank you very much, Mr. Luther. Appreciate you, what you're looking to do and look forward to working with you to make sure that it fits with our zoning and all those components. So, so again, thank you for that. Look forward to working with you on that. You've heard what I, my feelings and opinions around the community college, so I won't go through that again, as well as, thank you for your laugh, Mr. Winarsky. I won't go through that again. But, but it's, it definitely, I just want to echo that. Mr. Mursky has already mentioned about the, the great work that the Economic Development Department is doing here in the city. So to Chris and to all the staff there, you know, kudos and continue to keep working. He also mentioned about the CDBG budget that we are, still haven't received numbers for. And again, I echo what he was saying as far as reaching out to our federal administrators and doing whatever we can to at least make our voices heard and known that this program and this Community Development Block Grant definitely impacts our community and the citizens in our community in a significantly positive way. But if it goes away, it will have the same, and probably even a broader negative effect on the community because that those funds are used by nonprofits and even city departments to leverage to get other funds to provide service to our community. So let's just keep pushing and sending positive energy to, and phone calls to get the support for the CDBG funds to come into our city. Also, the McBride Vida, I don't know if I should touch that in my comment, but I will just for a moment. I hear, and I heard what was said and articulated earlier, and I always take it to heart and always ask questions later from other people. So I've already asked a few questions with the administration to, for a little bit of more, a little more clarity, if there's been any significant changes, we would like to, to know what they are. We were told and trust what we were told that there were going to be significant safety enhancements to both sides, north and south, 12th Street, East Avenue area. So that is necessary to happen and it's really important that that happens. I think it's important that community groups continue to do what they do to advocate and to work to, from their perspective, on how to keep our city safe and how to make it the highest quality of life and quality of living for all of our citizens, young, older, in every part of the city as well. Interesting point, and this is, please don't think that I'm in any way minimizing the accident with this young man, the young boy, eight-year-old who was hit, because I work with the family to help support them to get some, you know, to get down to Pittsburgh. So this is very close to me on a lot of levels. But right now, some of the things that we use the argument to save, maybe the bridge or to say, hey, we're using, the bridge isn't torn down and people still, kids are still crossing the bayfront in an inappropriate way or as kids. Kids are kids, right? So maybe the question isn't just the Vida being a tool for safety or a safer route because the Vida isn't down and kids are still using the bayfront. Maybe the question is about maybe supervising those spaces where we see are high-traffic, high-speed traffic areas and more appropriately. Because I go through there and cars are flying. It's impossible sometimes to see a child slipping out because a child's going to be a child and they're not going to look. And we're, I mean, cars are flying, you know what I mean? And so the bayfront's not going anywhere. So maybe we, you know, we've had multiple accidents. Maybe there's a way we can, the administration and whoever, to look at policing that space or those high-traffic, high-speed areas better, which will help to increase the safety of our citizens that are using those passages anyway and currently. So I think there's a couple of different ways. In the comments of citizens always bring up good ways for us to move forward to maybe make things better. I would like to say happy anniversary to Steve and Sonya Arrington, 30, man, over three decades. Boy, y'all don't look one, y'all don't look a day over 32 yourselves. But happy 32nd anniversary. A lot of times, we do so much business behind this desk that we forget the human side of each other. And so happy anniversary to you and to your other half. He would say you were his better half. So enjoy your day and thank you for what you're doing and what your family has given and donated and served to this community. That's all I have, Mr. President.
And last but not least, with the added time, Rose, please note for Mr. Witherspoon.
Mrs. Arrington?
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I was going to talk about my conference, Neighborhood, U.S. Neighborhood Conference that I went to a week and a half ago. A lot of the issues that were brought up here today, I went to workshops and learned about down there, but I'm going to put that off maybe to next, the next meeting. Because right now, my main concern is public safety here in the Erie community. My heart goes out to the young lady that was beaten and strangled. My heart goes out to the families, the young man that was just shot and killed. My heart goes out to the families of all these kids who have been hit on bicycles and the drivers leave the accident. My heart goes out to all these stab wounds victims. This is just the start of summer. Enough is enough. You know, these, these young men and young women have children, parents, family members who love them and care about them. I don't know how people can be so heartless. As a mother who lost a child, this only opens my wound more and more every day. You know, seven years, for the last past seven years, I've been going to visuals. I try to make it to everybody's visual. But I've been in, in college this last semester, so the days that the visuals were on, I was in class and I couldn't, couldn't go. But you know, I made a decision the other day. I can't do any more visuals. You know, I'm, I'm at my mental breaking point. Just watching the news and hearing about all this violence going on in our community is sad and is senseless. We have to come together as a community. We are all God's children. I truly believe that us as parents and adults, we should not be mothers and fathers to just our children, but to all children. Because these children need us. The fathers are absent. They may be in jail or they may be six foot under. These kids need as many people as they can to intervene in a positive These kids need as many people as they can to intervene in a positive way in their life. I'm just tired of the violence. I want us to come together as a community. We need to bring back hope. There is no hope in the Erie community, especially in the inner city. And whatever we need to do to spark that hope, we need to do it. But we have to come together as a community. God bless our community, and thank you. Everybody have a blessed day.
Thank you. My report will be a little bit longer, but not real long. Jim, you'd be glad to know that while I was in the Twin Cities, in the greatest hockey state in this country, where that sport is valued more than any other sport, when I told them where I was from, they knew one thing, Connor McDavid. So, I mean, it can't underlie the amount of publicity that we get from one gentleman that played hockey here, and in Minnesota, hockey is king. I want to mention Robbins Blast Neighborhood once again. I want to thank them for their partnership with the city, and to mention once again that we have many partnerships that exist at the present time, and we can always use more. The city itself cannot do what they did at Pebble Park. It would take us a while to do that. So, this is important, when they find a way to fund it and to get involved, and our people, and I want to thank the administration over the years, have worked with many of these organizations, such as the Frontier Group, the group at the McClellan Park area, and others around the community. And I get contacted all the time from other organizations, and I constantly refer them to Public Works and to the administration to have, to get involved and to do things, because it helps everybody, and when you take a partnership in your neighborhood, it just helps the whole community. Getting back to the Urban Garden, and it was interesting that I read an article that they now have urban gardens in Brooklyn, New York. So, I think we're on the right track, but I also agree with Mr. Jones that we're in a new area with these gardens, and we do need to look at them from a standpoint of, while we, you know, appreciate the work that the Sisters of St. Joseph do and the other food banks may do, if it's going to be for profit, we do need to address that issue. And that's not going to impact anything that the Sisters do or any other fine organizations. Getting back to HUD, it's getting to be kind of an embarrassment that the last two years, we have been through this, that HUD, CDBG, even so far as to go with the public school fiasco, it's like nothing matters in Harrisburg or Washington. I have never seen such indecision or the inability to agree on anything. And it's starting to hurt us when Mrs. Arrington talks about some of the programs that we provide, and Mr. Winarsky said the same thing when he held up that color brochure. Those programs could be gone very easily if the funding's not there. The city's going to have to find a way to fund them, and we're already strapped, and when the Commonwealth and the federal government are holding us hostage with these funds, it's not helping anybody, it's not helping the great organizations that they do fund. And it is going to be a terrible ripple-down effect. And I'm, I know I'm going to be meeting shortly, I meet regularly with our state reps, but I'm going to start meeting a little more with the federal reps, because there's so many problems we got. And once again, I hate to bela, you know, but here we are, talking about public school funding and funding valuable programs, and nothing's happening, nothing at all, not even, they don't even agree to disagree, and that's what's sad. Getting about the issue on high-speed roads, I agree with my colleagues that we really need to take a look at streets as Pine Avenue, 38th Street, Bayfront Highway, it's like, last time I was under, I swear I was in the Indy 500. Get, you know, and I've been, I've driven in some big cities, but I'll match that highway against anybody. I think the next time, Mr. Jones, we meet with the chief, we're going to have to have a long talk about maybe somehow funding a police officer once in a while to start targeting these main roads, not for a source of revenue, but I'm afraid somebody's going to get, there's going to be more accidents. I mean, I got blown off the road on Parade Street today by a guy going 60. That's way too much in a, what, 25, 30-mile zone? It's out of hand. And with that, we'll turn it over to our controller.
I have no report this week.
Thank you. Administration?
Just very briefly, I'd like to say, yes, the summer rec guides are out, they're certainly available here in City Hall and available online, lots of great programs. On the back of the guide is the sounds of summer, and we were fortunate enough to get the first one in at Mercy Terrace Apartments. Sister Felice has been wonderful to the city and to the administration. I know that she gives a little bit of her extra money, and I don't know that it's extra, but she does give some funding to the police and fire departments and Public Works for helping her residents out, and lots of good people up there. Next week, next Monday at 7:00, we'll be at St. James Manor, so please come out and enjoy some good music with some good neighbors. Had the opportunity yesterday afternoon to attend the Erie Community Foundation's annual meeting. My thanks to Mother Mary Beth Kennedy for all the work that she's done in our community. She was certainly honored by the Community Foundation for all of her good work, 40, 50 years that she's been working in this community and doing missions in Africa and Haiti, so we certainly are thankful and grateful for all that she does. Thank you.
Our solicitor, no comment?
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. With that, do we have motion adjourned?
No move.
Second?
You got it.
City Council adjourns at 10:39. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr.